Live on Comcast and standby for one minute. Okay, we are live on all our channels.
Hey, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock on April 21st, 2020, and time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We'll begin with the invocation and Councilman Alexander, would you mind offering a prayer for us this evening?
Glad to. Let's pray. It's time to grace God. Once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for this beautiful day that God has created. We pray, God, continually for frontline care helpers, care workers, all those who are trying to protect this city and other cities abroad. And I want to be with us in the midst of this meeting. We pray, in Jesus' name, we do pray in your heart. Amen.
I am hearing some extraneous noise. If somebody isn't muted that thinks they may need to be because there's some other noise coming in, you might want to be sure and mute your microphone. Ms. Kitchell wants to speak. Call the rollies. All right. Vice Mayor Camp?
Present.
Yay. Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Mr. Fan?
Here.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Love?
Here.
Mr. Overton?
Present.
Mayor, we have a forum. Thank you. Now, before we proceed any further, we need to vote on having this meeting electronically. So pursuant to Governor Lee's Executive Order Number 16, and the need to limit the beauty spread of COVID-19, April 21st, 2020, meeting of the Gallatin City Council will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. Instructions for participation by the public in this meeting are available on the city's website, and they were advertised prior to this meeting. At this time, we need a vote to proceed on with the meeting.
Give me over to make the motion to approve.
A motion by Councilman Overton.
Second by John Alexander.
Second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? All in favor of conducting this meeting by electronic means, please. Actually, we need a roll call vote for that, please, Ms. Kitchell. Vice Mayor Camp?
Ah.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fan?
Yeah.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, we have unanimous vote. Thank you. So we are approved to have this meeting electronically, and so we're going to move with the approval of the minutes. These are from the April 7th, 2020, City Council meeting.
First to approve.
Second.
Was that motion by Councilman Alexander?
I'm sorry.
You're fine. You're fine now, just one look in. And then second by Councilwoman Love, are there any corrections or additions? And we will have a roll call vote for the approval of the minutes, Ms. Kitchell, please. Vice Mayor Camp?
Ah.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fan?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
And Mr. Overton?
Yes.
They were approved unanimously.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Hayes, sorry. Miss you. We had one down. Minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you all. Now is the time for public recognition on agenda-related items. If there's anyone on this meeting that would like to make a public comment, now would be the opportunity to do so. Jeff, our moderator, will be helping those who are who have joined my phone, and then he'll be able to see others that have joined the call. And you will be able to raise your hand and indicate if you would like to make a comment. If you're on the meeting, if you're just calling in, we will actually call out your phone number. And so we ask that you introduce yourself and that your comment time will be limited to five minutes. But this time, Jeff, is there anyone wishing to offer a public comment this evening?
We'll go one by one down the list. Cal Gentry, I'm allowing you to talk. Go ahead. If anything you'd like to say for public comment.
Can you hear me at this point?
Yep.
I'm just here on item number one. If you have any questions for me, we appreciate all the help the city has given us in working through this this ordinance. And we're just here to answer any questions if we can be of any assistance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gentry. Who's next?
Josh Cross, would you like to speak? Okay, and we have a Pascal on the line. You wish to speak?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Okay, that's everyone.
Okay, well, thank you. If there's someone else wishing to speak, we will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed and move now to Mayor's comments. I do have just a few updates I want to share with you. Also have a resolution to present this evening, so I guess I'll go ahead and start with that. This is a proclamation by the mayor. It says, whereas first responders and medical professionals are brave, courageous, and dedicated individuals who are extremely trained and highly specialized within their skill sets to assist the community and provide aid during emergencies and any time of need. And whereas first responders and medical professionals are men and women who willingly put themselves in harm's way in order to protect and maintain a safe and secure environment. And whereas first responders and medical professionals make incredible selfless sacrifices in order to defend our community against all manners of disasters, threats, and times of crises. And whereas first responders and medical professionals are ready and willing to aid the people of Sumner County 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, in addition to instilling safety and maintaining order, many first responders and medical personnel also take the time to give back and volunteer at churches, schools, and through service organizations in order to enhance our community. And whereas first responders and medical professionals work on holidays around the clock in uncertain conditions and during dangerous events in order to ensure the public is safe and functioning to its optimal level of achievement. And whereas the city of Gallatin recognizes the value of these important professionals and thanks all first responders and medical personnel for their incredible and selfless contributions to communities across Sumner County. Now therefore, I page Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, to do hereby declare May 11th through May 15th, 2020, as first responder medical professionals appreciation lead and urge all citizens to show reverence, respect, and honor to our first responders and medical professional. And I would say a huge thank you to our first responders and medical professionals. No time like now has shown us their importance in our community. And I think this entire community and certainly communities across the country realize the value of these individuals and appreciate what they do on a daily basis, and especially what they do in a time like the crisis we're experiencing currently. What we're so fortunate that they are so smart, talented, skilled, and dedicated and work for us. And so we're grateful, and I hope all citizens will continue to show your appreciation to that group of people. There's been a real outpouring of support for them, and I hope that continues because their days are long and their days are hard, and we need to remember them during this very difficult time. For the council and for the public, I just want to share an update kind of on the situation right now with coronavirus in Sumner County. I'll start with today's numbers for the state of Tennessee. Currently in Tennessee, they've had 7,000 or we've had 7,394 cases and 151 deaths. In Sumner County, there have been 507 cases and 31 deaths. We believe that 21 of those deaths are associated with the Gallatin Center for Rehabilitation and Healing. I do want to remind you all that I expect these numbers will go up in the next couple of days more significantly than they have in the past several days. They've been trending under about a 2% increase, which is good. But remember, on this last weekend, they had the testing that was open to anyone, whether or not they had symptoms. And the Sumner County Health Department tested over 800 people. And so as those results come back, I do expect that we will see a larger increase than we have seen on the many days previous. And so do not be alarmed by that. That's just giving us some help in understanding how many in the people in the how many people in the community may actually be positive for COVID and not have symptoms or or, you know, wouldn't go to the typical testing. For the public and for you all as well, there is testing going on every day from Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM. And in Gallatin, that happens at the Gallatin Health Department, the Gallatin Clinic located at 1005 Union School Road. And so you can go there any day to be tested if you feel like you need to be tested. There will be another weekend drive-through testing event on May 3rd. That again is going to happen at Gallatin High School, and it will be from 9:00 AM until noon on that day. And so those are what I want you to know about related to COVID in our community at this point. Our city is having some hard hits in one certain department, Mr. Wilkinson. So, you know, we're working through various employees potentially being exposed and how that hurts the departments and their abilities to do the jobs that they're trying to do, but we're working through them. And by and large, I think our workforce has been very fortunate. We've had a lot of potential positive, you know, screening positive that wound up not being positive, so we're pleased with that, and we hope that trend continues certainly. But want to make sure that our employees are protected and taken care of. And our Human Resources Department is working hard with the various department heads when we do have certain situations that arise within different departments, so that is ongoing. You're also aware that the governor did say that he anticipates opening, or at least beginning to open the state back up on May 1st. For your information, all the mayors in Sumner County are meeting tomorrow to discuss what that might look like for Sumner County because different counties in our state have been impacted differently, and certainly Sumner County is taking a pretty big hit with this virus. And so we need to figure out if we can all be on the same page with what our plans may be moving forward. And I will share with you the outcome of that meeting and what I'm thinking before we move in that direction. I have signed to extend the state of emergency for another week. As you're aware, we do that on a week-by-week basis. And and there are some orders that fall under that state of emergency, so we continue to extend that at this point. And I think that is all for Mayor's comments at this point, so with that, I'm going to move on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the agenda is second reading on ordinance 01909-46, and Councilman Hayes is recognized for that.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Chapter 16, Traffic and Vehicles, by adding Article 8, Establishing the Big Station Camp Boulevard Transportation Improvement District, repealing conflicting ordinances providing perceivability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for discussion.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Nick Tuttle is on this call. Can I just ask a question? I support this 100%, and I appreciate all the hard work over the last few months that we've been doing this. But tell me once again why we would not submit this to the MPO for that intersection to help with state money, help us with that intersection at some point.
Councilman Overton, would you like for me to answer that question?
Yes, please.
This is Nick Tuttle. Yes, I just spoke with another councilman just before the meeting began and asking the same question. We certainly have the right and capability of applying for the grant. I know as we've discussed this over the years, yeah, I think the most elegant thing that for grant activity would be near the interchange, which would be the most expensive construction project, too. But if we do apply for grants for any improvements, then it federalizes the project, which means that it brings any federal requirements along with it. In other words, we've got, we need to follow all the federal guidelines that are issued there, which increases the price of the product. So although we may not have as many local dollars going into the product, there's certainly going to be a higher-priced product that's going to be built out there, even if it's the same exact thing that we would have built on our own. But I think the the other part of it is the timing of construction of projects. If the city of Gallatin continues to grow like we expect it to in in five to 10 years, we'll want to see most of these projects under development and maybe even under construction and constructed. If we were to go the route of trying to apply for grants and federalize the projects that we have that we're planning, then you can think of a timeline that's very similar to the Albert Gallatin Avenue extension, which that I've worked for the city now for 15 years, and that project had already secured grant funding before I started working for the city of Gallatin.
Yeah, but it's a little bit different, Nick, because that was, I mean, you're talking about raw land and everything else. Here, you're talking about an intersection with at that intersection there that we could apply for right now. And hopefully by the time we get ready to do something, we might, you know, MPO may fund it, we may, you know, participate, Nick, that's a lot of money. That's that's my only concern. Isn't, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I've been here on that Albert Gallatin project, and I understand it, but it's but it's not comparing apples to apples.
Now, I'd like to interject here because we have a lot of requests with the MPO and more than they would be able to find, and so I don't want to lose funding for something else to
I understand.
We've got so much that we're asking for because we do have good plans, and we've made great plans for the future. And it's like everything, every every project that gets added to their improvement plans extends the life of the 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 timeline of all that's in that basket, if you will. And and so I agree with Nick in that we're not opposed, it's just we really need to figure out what that might look like. And does it actually wind up being a benefit? Kind of like what we talked about with some of the sidewalks where we use some federal funds. And we would have been better off doing it with local dollars because it wound up costing so much and taking so long by doing it with the federal grant money, so.
I understand. I just like when they look at it.
I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to bring that up as well. Actually, had someone contact me via email saying that, you know, they wish that we would consider submitting that. So I think we need to figure out what that might look like if we did.
I appreciate it.
The other thing that that I had said to before the meeting when I was in discussion is the establishment of this ordinance doesn't prohibit us from applying for the grants. And if we do secure funds, it also doesn't prohibit us from refunding any of the additional dollars that we may have collected from developers. So there's nothing that would prohibit any of that. The grant application, it's not even mentioned in the ordinance, so it's totally outside of what we have written in the ordinance. So it's, the possibility is still there for us to apply and to refund the money to developers if if that's what you guys would choose to do.
Okay. I just like what you look at it, but I understand.
Anyone else have a comment? Okay, seeing no one, are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Kitchell, I want to ask that you call the roll for a roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Camp?
Ah.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you. Second reading on ordinance 01909-46 is passed unanimously. Next item is, item number two is Resolution R2004-20, and Councilman Overton is recognized.
Mary, this is a resolution, this is a resolution accepting public improvements. Fairway Farms Phase 2, Section 7, Phase 3, Section 1D, and I still move.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R2004-20, and Ms. Kitchell, if you would call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Camp?
Ah.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor unanimous vote. Thank you. Resolution R2004 is approved unanimously. Item number three is a resolution R2004-21, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution accepting the public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Fox and Phase 8. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R2004-21. Ms. Kitchell, if you call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Camp?
Ah.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, we again have a unanimous vote. Thank you. So Resolution R2004-21 is approved unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda this evening and moves us now to other business. So anyone on this council that has other business they'd like to bring forward?
Mayor, I'd like to put one thing on our work session agenda next week and just put Rosemont on there. We'll discuss it. I spoke to you about it, but if we could put that on there for further discussion, I would appreciate it.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
Do we have a date to start meeting at a regular location?
I'd say we don't at this point. The governor's orders on on Bill, I'm trying to think, the the safer home, Ms. Tomacoli, you may know. I think the safer home ends on April 30th, but I think the other guidance one actually goes through May 18th.
Yes, it's Executive Order 16, and it extends through May 18th at this point.
So I would
Go ahead.
I was going to say, so I feel like we should at least keep meeting electronically through that point. That that's the that's the order that allows the electronic meetings, right, Ms. Tomacoli? Yeah, so I would say we should do that at least through that date. And at that time, we should know whether we're ready to open the buildings up and
What do y'all think about phasing it in, say, the first council meeting of May, maybe just the council members show up with social distancing and then slowly phase the department heads in later.
Why are you wanting to do that?
I think we need to set an example. All we've got to do is keep our distance. We're promoting social distancing.
But aren't we setting an example by doing it this way, too?
You're setting them in both ways. I think by meeting in social distancing, we're setting an example of what we really need to be doing.
If we have a meeting where everyone is present and we are socially distanced appropriately, it would require we require quite a different setup. We'll pretty much have to rework the chambers and the microphones. We wouldn't be able to use, I'm thinking out loud, so um, we probably have to find a different way of setting that room up. And then I worry about, the other thing that it brings up for us is if we're all there, but we don't allow the public there, they would still have to participate by virtual means, which would mean that we would still have to be online also so that we could interact with the public.
That would make it too difficult then. I would draw my suggestion because we'd be spreading computers all over this room.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think through what that could look like, and and I mean, I see your point. You have other thoughts?
I think we should continue it this way as long as the governor's order says to to stay at home.
What if he says to continue through June?
Yeah.
That's out.
I think we need to look at how the cases are being presented and what it looks like, the numbers first of the month.
Well, now, I think I think it will be very interesting once we get the final numbers on this testing of 800-plus people that they did on one day last weekend. Like I said, our numbers have been trending good, but this this mass testing will kind of give us a good idea, too. So and we'll have, we'll have another work session between now and then. Anyone else with any business? Thought that's joining the meeting or on the phone, now the opportunity to comment on things. And I want to turn to Mr. Henshaw at this point.
Okay, Mr. Javance, I'm going to unmute you. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, Jeff, thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, how are you doing?
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. Hey, just a quick, quick update again. Liberty Creek, people still work on Sunday. That's two Sunday on the road that, you know, the police is called again. I went, I went in Sunday before nine. There was a full crew working using pneumatic nail guns. I was able to hear them from my house. And a guy, a guy were working with a bobcat moving ground, so I stopped there because I like to, you know, educate people because a lot of these contractors don't come from the city. They are from the outside and was talking nicely with them, and they basically told me that Jacob from Davidson Home told them that the site was not in the city limit, so they didn't have to follow the city regulation. And the contractor at the same time told me there is no sign at the entry telling us we can't do it. So that come back to an idea I did both with with you guys six months ago to put the sign at the entry of the development, telling people that they have to follow the noise apartment, the noise regulation on Sunday. That would probably simplify a lot of issues. And that would, you know, avoid us to have to call the police to come and police that that construction site on Sunday, and it's even worse now that people stay at home. They have construction noise all week, and the only day they can relax is still going on. I want to give a shout out to the police. That took them 19 minutes to come, which I think it's a really good number. And the officer went to talk to the construction crew and make them leave the site. But again, it's constant every Sunday. Davidson Home tell their contractor that they can come and work on Sunday. So I would like to know what can the city do to make that stop? And that's a recurrent, recurrent for months and months and months, every Sunday it's going on. So what can you do, guys, to fix that problem?
Thank you, Mr. Javance. Mr. Stewart, I'm going to let you follow up on that one. I think it's time to ask Davidson to put a sign in reference of their development, too.
Well, they had fifteen signs up out there. I don't know if storms tore them down, took them out or what, but they had signs that they'd placed. And I'll follow up with Davidson Homes again tomorrow.
Thank you. It is it has been quite a burden out there. Anyone else wishing to make public comment this evening?
We have a caller with a phone number ending in 283. Your mic is open. Would you have something you'd like to say? Okay, and then we have a last caller that is on a Galaxy S9. I don't have your phone number, but I'm going to open your mic. You have something you'd like to say? Okay, that's everyone.
All right. Well, thank you. That concludes public recognition on non-agenda-related items. I did have an item of other business I need to bring to this council. If I may go ahead and do that, it'll be a quick one. We have a food truck, a local business called Grill Works that would like to give away food to EMA police first responders on either May 1st or 5th. They would like to set up in Gallatin City Hall Parking Lot. All the food will be pre-packed. They will be practicing social distancing, and they will be simply handing out the food. And since it was our parking lot, it was during business hours, we felt like we needed to ask this council their feelings on it.
I feel good about it. That's really kind of them to do.
I think so, too. Without objection? Anyone have an objection? Speak now. Okay, I will tell them they have our blessing then. All right, if there's no further business, we can adjourn this meeting, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being with us tonight and hope everyone has a Thank you for being with us tonight, and I hope everyone has a good rest of the evening and a good rest of the week. We're adjourned. Bye, everybody.